I call the November 26 regular business meeting of City Council. Interim chief, please. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For those in attendance this evening, if you'd like to speak during the public comment period, there's a sign on the sheet in the back of the room and would just ask that you complete that ahead of time. So, second item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five oh. Thank you. Number three is matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I would just like to thank the city staff and all the employees of the city for a great job during the storm this past week. We were out of power, that's not their fault, but they did a tremendous job keeping the city operational and going.
Absolutely. I would echo that. I had continued getting high marks for crews out there still removing a lot of debris and it's still going to take some time, so I would ask for those to be patient because it's a lot of debris. Anybody else have anything?
I did want to add that I will be planning my constituent meeting on the 4th of December, the first Tuesday of December, 9:00 a.m. at the French Press. And I think we'll have a little press release out on the website as well. So if folks are interested in talking about city matters, I'll plan to be there on Tuesday the 4th.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to take the time to recognize Captain Roy Robinson for his recent retirement and 33 years of service to our city and would just, again, just show our appreciation and gratitude for his service. And congratulations to Captain Robert Thomas of the new captain to B shift for his promotion. So congratulations to him. Also echo what the vice mayor said about storm cleanup. And then just some things, I've been doing the last couple of weeks, had the privilege of having, presenting a proclamation to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the Grace Evangelical Lutheran Church the other Sunday, and that was a really great event and they sure did know how to pack the church in that day, so it was great. And then also spoke this past weekend for the Salvation Army Red Kettle kickoff. And just as a reminder for folks that, you know, Giving Tuesday, everybody's, every day of the week after Thanksgiving, I guess, has to have some sort of brand, right? So that's tomorrow and we have many, many worthwhile organizations that think through social media and otherwise, that there's a lot of matching stuff going on. So if, I would respectfully ask those listening at home or online that if you have an opportunity to contribute and maximize those donations to our many worthwhile charities, please do so. And then lastly, just let folks know, I saw this evening a release of the brightbus.org, their new transit website. It's pretty remarkable, really compact, works on mobile devices and at home, and you can kind of plan out your transit experience through the region. So just another great service, so that way folks in Stanton and the county know how to come to Waynesboro to do their shopping, so I appreciate that. All right, well, number four is a public hearing to consider introducing an ordinance modifying the conditions of an existing conditional use permit, allowing temporary supportive housing operations at 1035 Fairfax Avenue. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have as a conditional use permit amendment, which the process is the same as a conditional use permit. This is for the Waynesboro area Refuge Ministry or the Warm Transitional Housing Shelter. It's located at 1035 Fairfax Avenue behind the city shops. Warm helps women and children find long-term temporary housing as well as training and education to residents. They offer wraparound services rather than being focused simply on housing. They've got a 501(c)(3) designation, they're a very professional organization and they do great work in the community. They're zoned RG5 currently. They received a conditional use permit to offer transient lodging at this location back in 2013. The Warm Shelter here was originally established by volunteers who did not have a lot of experience in transitional housing, and there were a lot of conditions that the planning commission and council put on the application because we were concerned about the impacts in that area. Since then, Warm has grown and it's continued to thrive and it's become a more sustainable professional organization, but with that comes the need for some changes in its CUP conditions. So the amendment that's proposed tonight is to the condition regarding on-staff or onsite staffing. Currently, it says that it shall maintain a minimum of three full-time employees in the following positions, a qualified daytime shelter manager who has training relevant to the operation of a temporary supportive housing, and then two nighttime shelter managers who shall have their residents onsite. This condition came out of the situation when the shelter was founded, where you had a couple who had made it kind of their volunteer life mission to host this shelter, and so were willing to make that their residence and have folks live there. And then the requirement, the real gist of the requirement was to have at least one professional, trained staff member also assist them. But now we have a proposed amendment, it shall maintain appropriate professional around-the-clock staffing coverage for the facility with no less than three full-time employees providing services and supervision 24 hours per day and seven days per week. Basically, what this means is that no one will be required to live, actually make their primary residence at the shelter, but they will be required to have an onsite awake staffing person there at all times. So this will help them transition from, again, the situation where you had someone whose sort of life mission and who's willing to live onsite, and that's, I think, a more unique circumstance, it's going to be more relevant to individuals, to now being more of a long-term sustainable professional organization. And obviously, most professional care providers are going to be folks just like you and me who probably intend to go home after their eight-hour shift. And so this will require them to still have a staffer onsite, but will not require anybody to actually make the shelter their residence. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, and staff finds no negative impacts. The shelters provided us and staff looked into a number of other practices of similar shelters around the country. There isn't a national standard for this type of policy, but the states that do have state-level policies, and Virginia's not one of those, this is consistent with that. And then the planning commission recommended approval on a six to nothing vote.
I do have a question, Mr. Judee. Is this something that they came to us saying, hey, our needs are changing and we want to make sure that we're up to date, or is this something we?
Yes, they came to us saying that, yeah, as the folks who are willing to live there, you know, move on, it's, that's kind of a unique position that it's, you couldn't necessarily always fill, but you can always, you know, hire social workers who are willing to do a shift.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay. Thank you. Luke, I will hereby open the public hearing. Mr. Hand, do we have any?
Some mayor short, excuse me. No one has signed up to speak, but I see Ms. Deborah Burns Freeman here on behalf of, she is the applicant on behalf of Warm. I don't know if she has remarks or not, but I would acknowledge her presence.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then I will close the public hearing. And are there any additional questions or need for clarification? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Great, thank you. Ordinance is introduced this evening, will be considered at our following meeting in December. Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, for joining us this evening, too. Next is, item five is to receive report on the city's stormwater program from Mr. Trafford McCray, Stormwater Manager. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. McCray is here this evening to deliver the annual stormwater program report. Some of the material that you're here tonight, I think, will be familiar to those of you who've been on council for several years. I think Trafford has tried to inject some interesting context, history, that sort of thing of the program. And then as well this evening, we have Mr. Keith Thompson from the engineering firm Wiley Wilson with us. And Mr. Thompson's firm is working with the city to develop business plans for the stormwater program going forward. We're just now completing the fifth year of a five-year national discharge elimination permit, and we will enter into our next permit in the upcoming cycle, so we're taking time to develop program plans moving forward and consider funding for the next five years of the program. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you all for having me tonight. As Mr. Shaw said, I'm going to give you all a brief update on the status of the stormwater program here in 2018, about halfway through fiscal year 2019, and then turn it over to Keith Thompson. If you all have any questions, we can answer those at the end. I know many of you have seen this slide before, and we've certainly all seen plenty of rain this year, but it's just a real quick refresher on what is stormwater runoff, especially in the urban environment as we increase impervious surfaces. We have more, more water coming off of those surfaces which can create flooding and also water pollution problems, and those are the two things we try to tackle when we're managing stormwater runoff, often at the same time. I wanted to really take the opportunity tonight to step back and give you all a big-picture view of the stormwater division's role. We've developed, as regulations and people's views of stormwater have changed, and so this begins with our vision statement, which our vision is to thrive as a critical part of a vibrant, innovative, public works department and a, and community. And so with that comes, comes our mission, which is, which is built on that vision statement. And so our mission is to find cost-effective ways to maintain and improve drainage infrastructure and to work to improve the health of the South River through educational, original educational programs, strong regulatory compliance, and advanced efforts to reduce pollution. Building further on that, that mission, we've found kind of four key program focal points for the stormwater program. These are administration, regulatory compliance, capital improvements, maintenance, and then TMDL compliance. TMDL stands for total maximum daily load, and that's something that Keith is going to talk about more in depth, but it centers around our efforts to reduce stormwater pollution. And these overlapping areas have evolved on parallel tracks. I know some of you have experienced the rapid changes with the stormwater program over the past few years, and some of you all are probably new to all the inside baseball lexicon that comes with managing stormwater runoff. So I thought it'd be good tonight to just walk through a brief history of stormwater, the stormwater program in Waynesboro as a way to start talking about the future. I thought we would start with 1961 for the purposes of this short history. The significance of 1961 is that's the first time that a comprehensive map of the city system was put together, and this map laid out both existing and proposed drainage infrastructure in 1961. Of those proposed projects that were laid out in 1961, seven, 17 of those were actually on our 2006 CIP plan. Some, you know, obviously other things happened, Waynesboro grew, we added infrastructure. Between 1967 and 1981, several flood control dams were built above Waynesboro to mitigate some of the worst flooding on the South River. And then also in 1984, the city annexed lands from Augusta County, which added significant infrastructure, including drainage systems, to the city. Moving forward on to the mid-1980s where some of the regulatory programs started, started being passed down to the states and then localities as a result of the Clean Water Act, in the mid-1980s, we started installing stormwater ponds. This is one of the first ones built in the city off of South Delphine Avenue, and these were very sterile installations, fenced off, they weren't really considered part of the landscape, and what they were intended to do was manage local flooding. Then in 1992, Virginia adopted erosion control regulations, which again were passed down to the city, and so then the city had to begin inspecting sites for compliance with erosion control regulations and also reviewing engineering plans more thoroughly. So as we're trying to get those regulatory programs going, we, we did a CIP update in 1999. This is the first time that the scoring system we still use today was put into place. So when we evaluate a capital project, we look at the number of properties affected, whether it affects access to emergency services, the frequency of flooding, does it happen every year, does it happen once every 10 years, and then also, how much would it cost to actually fix this problem? What's the feasibility? So we, we still use that same basic ranking system. Another thing that was first identified in 1999, the number one priority was maintenance, so just taking care of what we, we already had. And then in 2006, that, that program was updated with updated project descriptions and also some, some costs. So as this is all happening, we, we saw more regulatory pressure. In 2006, the city was actually in a consent order with the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we had to hire dedicated erosion control program staff. The stormwater program was officially designated, and water quality was added to, on the state level to regulation, so that was something else that we had to take a look at. And the Chesapeake Bay TMDL comes up again. At this point, it was more a conversation between state and federal authorities about how the program would be administered, but it, that takes place then as we kind of work through the story. Then in 2009, the, the maintenance section was officially formed. Equipment was purchased through the general fund at that time. Most of that equipment now is almost 10 years old and nearing the end of its life cycle, dump trucks, vac hoes, things like that. The maintenance section was originally funded through VDOT maintenance funds, now it's actually housed under the Stormwater Utility Enterprise, but it is still under the general supervision of the Streets Division. Capital improvements, so while this is happening with building regulatory programs, maintenance program, city council also invested heavily in capital improvements. 2.8 million have been invested since 2009, and with six large-scale projects completed, including this one on Rockfish Run where the, the original culvert over Rockfish Run on Kirby Avenue flooded regularly and actually isolated eight properties from emergency services. And so the solution that was landed on was to build a, a larger culvert on the intersecting 10th Street. So that was one of the projects that was, that was done since 2009. So while we're trying to get maintenance programs going, doing capital improvements, we saw more regulations. The biggest one probably is our designation as an MS4 community, and I was going to touch on that briefly in, in just a minute, but also in 2014, one thing that's overlooked is this, the VSMP ordinance, that stands for Virginia Stormwater Management Program. And so that put another layer of inspecting construction sites on the, on the city, not just erosion control, but also looking more heavily at everything from portageons to concrete washout, and also added more stringent post-construction requirements to develop that we have, we had to learn and get up to speed on just reviewing those plans. As I said, the MS4 program, MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and that, that's designated at the federal level and then administered through the state, so it's a, it's a multi-layered permit for us. We were first designated in 2013, so this current fiscal year is, is year one of a second full five-year permit cycle for the city. And that, that MS4 program is a big animal in and of itself. It's actually six minimum control measures that include education and outreach, monitoring outfalls to make sure we only have stormwater coming out of our pipes, the, the environmental inspection services, erosion control, VSMP, inspecting public and private detention ponds, and then maintaining our city facilities, and that's called good housekeeping. So all of those plus the TMDL special condition fall in under the blanket of the MS4 program. So I think staff and especially city council realized that with all these different programs that were growing and coalescing the need for, for stable funding. So in 2015, the Stormwater Utility Fee was passed to provide that stable funding for MS4 activities, maintenance operations, to meet upcoming TMDL requirements, and then also possibly fund CIP projects. And so the, the utility fee is a, is a service-oriented fee based on the amount of impervious area on a, on a property and the resulting stormwater runoff it generates. And it's important to note that the, the structure that we have was reviewed by a citizen advisory committee and then recommended to council for the vote, and that utility fee funds such things as annual contracts to clean, to clean storm sewers, it helped pay for the, the street sweeper that we're operating right now, that picks up large amounts of debris off city streets, storm sewer replacements, reworking ditches. So it funds a lot of different things, and it's a, it's a very positive thing for us to have that, that stable funding. I'm going to hand it over now to Keith Thompson with Wiley Wilson. We've been working with Keith for a little over five years now. They've done a lot as far as helping us build our MS4 program, also helping us build the, the stormwater utility rate structure, and then even just a lot of the behind-the-scenes work on keeping the mapping and everything going. So I'm going to hand it over to Keith now to talk with you all a little bit about TMDLs and the stormwater enterprise.
So before we look forward, I kind of, it really starts now, and one thing, the city has grown on, from a stormwater perspective tremendously over the last five years. This has been one of the most turbulent times in stormwaters' history, not just in this area, not just in Virginia, but all across America, really. It's really become on the forefront of everything, and going from not having a storm, an official stormwater utility in 2013, just being named an MS4 community to where you are now has been fantastic. You've done a lot of great work, it's been facilitated by the council and by your staff, and you've done a lot of great things. First and foremost, having a stable funding base is fantastic. That's something that a lot of communities within Virginia do not have and they're fighting for right now. It's a source that enables you to manage your program and not just be reactive to it and be subject to more oversight from both DEQ and federal regulators. You've continued to develop a maintenance backlog, so you're starting to try to get proactive about it. Really, you're still somewhat reactive in nature to that, but you are learning a lot about your maintenance needs, a lot about your system, so you're really progressing that. You've got a complete MS4 program that, as Trafford said, has moved into that second cycle, so you're starting to mature as a program. It's fully operational. During that first five-year stint, you really just kind of ramped up to getting to where everybody else was. You've caught up now, and now you're on the same page as everybody else who's in MS4 in Virginia and has been for some time. And you're continuing to monitor your TMDL cost, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a few seconds, but really, as you're starting to look forward, you're starting it from a, a position of strength and a position of, of good fortune. Really, it all starts with what, our future starts with what you own. You've learned a lot over the last five years about that. You have over 70 miles of storm sewers and storm ditches, and if you think about that, that is a lot of mileage, of linear footage of pipe and structures that you have to now maintain, you have to have oversight of. You've got eight miles of stormwater alleys, which is somewhat unique. I've seen smaller sections of this, but you've got eight miles worth of alleys that are basically dedicated spaces to take stormwater through subdivisions, overlaying through these alleyways. These add extra maintenance costs, different maintenance cycles than the rest of your infrastructure does. They need more and more regularly, basically. You've got a lot of inlets, stormwater basins. The biggest thing here is your regulated outfalls. These are the things that created your permit, that is what's holding you to all these standards now. So there's 150 regulated outfalls that any water that comes to that, that you're in charge of, responsible for, and that's what you're getting held to on your permit. And that permit, the biggest piece of it right now, the biggest, most scariest thing is really the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, and that's a pollution, pollution diet that basically says you're not allowed to, to discharge more than so, this much nitrogen, this much phosphorus, and this much total suspended solids. They've determined scientifically, the EPA has, that those are the main constituents that are affecting the water quality within Chesapeake Bay, and because all of your stormwater flows down there, now you have a limit to what you can discharge. And you, like all the, most communities in Virginia, are already above that limit. So over the next 10 years, between now and 2028, we have to get underneath that limit. That's the requirements by your permit, so that's really what you're facing. It's a, it can be a daunting task, but you've made a great, a lot of great headway with this. Most important thing you've done is you've mapped your stormwater network to minimize what your actual responsible area is. We've been able to take areas that drain directly to the river or don't drain to your infrastructure, drain to private infrastructure, and take that out of what your area is. So you no longer have to address any pollutant reductions from those private parties that are not draining into your system. So we've really shrunk that load down that you have to remove significantly doing that. The other thing that we've done is taken advantage of all the stuff you're already doing as part of your program. You know, street sweeping has already been mentioned today, that's going to be a huge part of your solution, and that's something that directly affects all of your constituents. Everybody wants to see clean streets, they want to be able to walk on sidewalks that aren't covered in debris. Just by removing that and doing what you need to do for good housekeeping is going to help you on your TMDL, and it's actually done quite a significant amount of work. And you've also done other projects like the one pictured here, which is a wetlands that you've created previously prior to this TMDL fraud issue that you're getting a lot of great credit for. So we've compiled all the things that you've already done and taken that into account, and we've actually found that you've already met your goals for 2023, and quite easily, actually. So between now and 2023, from a regulatory perspective, you're in great shape. The goal for 2023 was that you had to make 40% of your reductions for your overall plan, and you're there, and in fact, you've exceeded that and made great headway to your 2028 goals. You can see that nitrogen, which is common for most localities, is the one that's lagging behind. That's because, that's the nutrient that's the hardest to capture, and our technologies don't do as good a job on that. So that's where, over the next 10 years, we'll focus looking on how we attack that. that. And some of the things we might look at is really enhancing your street sweeping. You have a direct benefit locally to that. So that'll be a great opportunity to maybe do it more strategically or even potentially add another street sweeper. So you have a second crew working, which would also mean additional manpower, uh, but that might be the most cost-effective way to really attack the TMDL. Before you start looking at adding additional BMPs, that will be additional maintenance cycles that you'll have to adhere to and also a large upfront cost. Um, so we're, that's something that we continue to keep in, in front of us and watch. Um, and really, right now, we're in a watching pattern because we're waiting on DEQ to give us guidance for how they want us to address this next five years. Um, they're about a year behind on giving us that guidance. So we don't want to get too far ahead in planning. We want to, you know, make sure we're keeping watch of it, but we don't want to plan for rules that are old and get you in trouble that way. So we, we are monitoring that right now. And of course, all this costs a lot of money, and that's where the storm water utility fund comes in. Um, this is showing that you basically earn about one point one million dollars a year, and you have a fantastic collection rate of greater than ninety-nine percent. Uh, certainly, you can't hope for any better. Um, what you see on the chart there is basically breaking down the two sections of the storm water utility fee. Um, the smaller section is for single-family residential type houses. Uh, these are the three tiers that we set up. Um, essentially, that is a smaller portion of the overall budget because they create less runoff than the overall. Mostly, houses are just dealing with either a driveway, maybe some small sidewalks, and then their roof area. Whereas a commercial property has a huge parking area, you know, large box stores have a lot of roof area. They're creating a lot more runoff. Um, the single-family residential area really becomes more of a public awareness factor of making sure everybody's aware of the program. And it's also covering the roads and streets and sidewalks that they're using as citizens. Um, so that's helping to pay for that portion of things. And really, the non-single-family residential, that's really all your commercial, industrial, anything that's not just a single-family residence. And those are really carrying the bulk of your one point one million dollars, and it's directly proportional to how much area that they actually have that's creating runoff. So in two thousand sixteen, that basically broke down into the different areas of costs that we're showing here, uh, the bulk of which was your administrative cost. This is right after we started the utility fee, and it was really designed primarily covering that. Um, we were able to establish some retained earnings, which is, um, basically a good maintenance for your program. That's, we, ideally, you want to carry at least two months' worth of, um, money that could cover your administrative costs. So that is kind of a rainy day fund. It can also provide money for capital expenses, um, things like equipment and whatnot. Um, we also, the other biggest chunk is the maintenance that we know, all the way back from your initial C I P, is that maintenance is the biggest thing for you to efficiently run your storm water program. And in two thousand sixteen, that was a significant chunk. As you fast forward to two thousand eighteen, uh, the biggest things I wanted, want you to take away from this is, one, your retained earnings grew, which is great. That's very intentional on, uh, your staff's part. Um, there's also preparing for some planned, uh, capital purchases for some equipment. We said the equipment's nearing its end of its useful life. We need to start preparing for that. And the other thing is the maintenance cost. The maintenance cost is growing in large part because we are learning more about your system. You are learning more about what we need to do in order to maintain that system and make sure that we're staying in compliance with the MS four program and also preparing for, uh, additional C I P projects that are out there. The current staffing and the current levels are able to do some of the smaller projects. Um, and so you see that growth. As we project out, and this projection that we're looking at is assuming a fairly static state for the storm water program, um, which, um, is not realistic to consider necessarily, but it gives us a good snapshot. The biggest thing that we know that's going to happen in two thousand twenty-two is basically it's going to start operating in the red. You're no longer going to be able to cover the maintenance for, with normal growth that we're going to see. Um, expenses are going to go up, and also you're going to start, because you're going to be working in the red, you're going to start whittling away that retainage. You're also going to see in between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-three, that equipment that we're preparing to buy is going to start needing to be purchased. So that's about three hundred and thirty thousand of that five hundred thousand that's put there. So as you move into the red in two thousand twenty-two, you're pretty quickly going to drain down those retain, retained earnings. And, you know, as I said, this was a fairly static state. Look at it. The reality is in two thousand twenty, there's going to be a new census done as part of the annual census rotation. When they do that, they're most likely going to redefine your MS four area based on where your population has been growing. And you're probably going to take on a little bit more of your system, which is going to give you more area and more utility system that's part of that permitted area, which means you're going to have more TMDL to do, more maintenance to do, more inspections to do. So it's going to be a bigger burden on this program. So you're going to see growth related to that. You're also going to see in, in that timeframe, we're going to be moving in that final cycle on TMDL. That's the cycle that you haven't quite gotten yet, and you're going to have some significant costs associated with that that we're going to have to get into. Now, as we said, this program at this point in two thousand twenty-two is going to be working in the red. And it's really, as we go back to those program focal points, it's only going to be fully paying for the administrative and regulatory compliance area of your storm water program. Your maintenance area down in here is going to really just be partially funded. And it's not, it's going to be above the bare minimum, but you're certainly not going to be in a proactive state. Um, there really needs to be a lot more money focused on maintenance to be able to do more regular capital projects, to do more line cleaning and inspections. So you have a better handle on what's going on and a more robust program in general. Uh, one of the things that we are looking at right now and, and Trafford and his staff are looking at is their current maintenance crew. They have a single crew which is responsible for, um, planning projects, performing projects, and also other administrative tasks related to storm water. So they get pulled off if there's a spill or something needs to happen from an administrative perspective. So they're not able to efficiently get some of these maintenance projects done. So they're, we're already looking at needing to grow the staff by an extra person just to help the administrative functions of that so they can be more consistent about getting the maintenance done. Um, and as we move into a proactive phase, that maintenance is going to get significantly more expensive. And then you look at the capital improvement projects and the TMDL. Those are going to be more sizable projects that you're going to be looking at potentially taking on debt service for. So going back to that retainage, you got to have enough money in that retainage to be able to take on debt service, to be able to address those larger, more capital or TMDL-type projects. And right now, the two thousand twenty-two budget doesn't afford any money for that specifically. Um, so we see that two thousand twenty-two being a, a critical area in terms of your utility growth period and your storm water management growth. And with that, I'll bring Trafford back up just for some closing thoughts.
Thank you, Keith. So I put this slide up, up here because I, I do think it is really important to, to maintain a positive outlook and, and to look at how far, um, with the help of city council, the, the storm water program has come. But so, so why is the storm water program important? One of the primary reasons is maintaining regulatory compliance. We, we don't talk about it too much, but i- if we don't meet some of these milestones set out by, um, DEQ and EPA, there are, there are some, uh, some ways that they can find us on, on the backend if we're not, not meeting our goals. Um, you know, working to improve drainage infrastructure to, to tackle some of these problems that have, have been out there for a long time. And then finally, you know, having a clean river and, and streams that the community can enjoy because I think we all realize that's a, a central part of, of Waynesboro and, and one of the things that really makes Waynesboro unique. So, um, do you all have any questions for myself or Keith?
Could you, um, talk about how you go about calculating the fee and, and also going to a little bit more detail? I know he talked about like the roof and your driveway and sidewalks and talking a little bit more about impervious areas.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll let Keith take that.
Sure. So when the utility was developed, uh, that was one of the things that we were tasked with was figuring out how we would determine what the utility charges would be relative to impervious area. Um, so luckily, uh, Waynesboro does have a really good G I S system, um, which has basically computerized areas for your roof structures, for parking lots, for roads, um, sidewalks in your public areas and on commercial properties. Um, the data on residential is a little bit, uh, less defined, but mostly it's roof structures for either your buildings or your outbuildings. So your houses, garages, that kind of thing. Um, so what we did, we used the, the software to basically take your parcel lines directly out of your G I S system and overlay that with your impervious area. So your building layers, your, um, road layers, parking lot layers. And it assigned a impervious area, it calculated impervious area for each parcel. So then we took all that parcel data and came up with what's called the E R U, which is an equivalency residency unit, which is basically the average square footage of impervious area for each parcel. And that came out to be sixteen hundred square feet per E R U. Um, so then we did an exercise with the commission that was, they, they used, uh, to get some feedback from, to kind of look at how that rate structure worked. And what we did, we, what we decided worked well with the commission and what was recommended was that residential would be put into one of three tiers, uh, one, two, and three. A three tier is basically a, a house that's equivalent to the average condition. And with all residences, we only accounted for the roof area of either their house or their outbuildings as well, because that was the only thing that we had confident data at the time for. And it get, tended to be a little conservative on the low side for residences. So anybody in that average range fell in a two. So they would get a one E R U value once that was determined. Um, and what we wanted to do is find a number of square footage that put two-thirds of the overall residential population in that middle category where they would only have to pay one E R U per month. And then we wanted to look at the smaller parcels and look for an average of about twenty-five percent of parcels that would fall into that because that we were going to do a half E R U charge per month. And the reason we did that was because that twenty-five percent went very closely together with the poverty rate as dictated for the, for the community. And most of the time, the smaller parcels with less impervious area also tend to be your more impoverished areas. So we wanted to make sure that those areas got a little bit reduced rate comparatively. And then we had a higher threshold where it was the larger homes with lots of impervious area that kicked in in that num, that area three, um, which they would pay two E R Us value. So anybody with over three thousand square feet of, s- square footage of impervious, of the roof area, would fall into that third category. So from a residential perspective, that's how we did it. Uh, we felt like the data supported that well, and that would be easy for everybody to kind of understand that they fell into one of those three categories. And that also would reduce the number of, um, questions about it because if you had a house that was sixteen hundred square feet of roof area, you knew your house was sixteen hundred square feet. So that's pretty intuitive. And you knew that in order to you, for you to get into a different classification, you would have to go all the way down to either twelve hundred or all the way up to three thousand. So we felt like from a operation standpoint, that would drive a lot fewer questions. So on the residential side, that's how we kind of came about that. On the non-residential side, basically, they, we take all the area and divide it by that sixteen hundred square feet. So if a parcel has a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of area that's impervious, that would just be divided by the sixteen hundred square feet to get the total number of E R Us, and then that would be multiplied. And then at the time, back in two thousand fifteen, when we were looking at this, we looked at the overall estimated cost of compliance with MS four program as kind of the, the level that we wanted to achieve in terms of funding. And so then it was an exercise of taking the amount of funding that we needed and the number of E R Us that we would be able to bill and basically divide it out to figure out what the needed, um, cost per E R U per month was. And that's how we came up with the three dollars and forty-two cents. Um, that was a long explanation, but I wanted to be detailed enough so you could understand it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was great. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trafford. Thank you.
Moving on to item six is to consider adopting a resolution requesting the General Assembly to introduce a bill amending the charter of the city of Waynesboro in the following manner. One, amending the date and time of the annual city council organizational meeting to coincide with the first regular meeting of city council in July. Two, amending the consideration of city council ordinances appropriating funds to the city from twice to once. And three, confirming the application to the Board of Equalization as a prerequisite to the jurisdiction of the circuit court with respect to assessment disputes. Ms. Michelson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, upon consideration of the comments from and desires of the public at the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen public hearing and further discussions among members of city council, city council has desires to incorporate the public's input, um, into the proposed amendments while maintaining, um, the desires of the city and struck a balance between the city's desire to be more efficient, uh, relating to the receipt of funds and the public's desire for, to keep the amount of time allotted for consideration of the ordinances to two times. So accordingly, um, pursuant to the council's recommendations, I revised the resolution that was published for the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting in just one area relating to the considerations of the ordinances. Then we changed article, um, three point five C of the city charter relating to the consideration of ordinances. The revised resolution maintains the two considera, you know, the consideration of two, of any ordinance at two meetings, um, for all ordinances except ordinances that relate to where the city is the recipient of funds or grant monies so that there isn't the delay in receiving those funds. And, uh, at, so it could be considered and passed at one meeting open to the public. And then the remaining portion of two considerations remains the same, as does the remaining two issues, um, that you just discussed, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, amending the date of the organizational meeting and, um, application to the Board of Equalization. Those two proposed charter amendments remain the same in the revised resolution as advertised in the original resolution.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Was there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All as a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. We'll get that letter out to Holly tomorrow. Um, should appreciate for that. Thank you. All right. Number seven is to consider adopting a resolution certifying new streets for the Virginia Department of Transportation Urban Maintenance Funds. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor, short and members of council, um, you may be aware that each year the city of Waynesboro receives urban, urban street maintenance from, funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation. In the current fiscal year, Waynesboro expects to receive in excess of three point seven million dollars through this program. In order to qualify for funding, streets must meet certain minimum design and construction standards, and their acceptance for funding must be approved by VDOT's local resident engineer. Noting the design and construction standards, not all existing city streets qualify for the program. City staff prepares annually an application submitting to VDOT newly constructed or newly classified streets for funding. The council must certify the submittal of new streets for the application. Attached is this year's street list. It represents, um, our request to VDOT for inclusion in additional funding through the urban maintenance program. I would make, um, one note, as council prepares to consider the resolution through supporting documents, I would, um, remove at this time, um, DuPont Boulevard, uh, point one two tenths of a mile south of West Main Street. Um, we'll submit that, um, for consideration next year as appropriate. If there are any questions, I'm happy to ask, answer them.
Any questions? Okay. Um, is, um, I'll just, uh, state since I, my, my day job is I work for the, for the department, um, that I'll, I'll be abstaining from, from the vote this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All as a favor say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Thank you. And number eight is to consider introducing an ordinance amending chapter seventy-eight, article two, taxation, section seventy-eight dash thirty-two dash two of the Code of the City of Waynesboro to provide for the abatement of levies on buildings raised, destroyed, or damaged by fortuitous happenings. Mr. Hamp?
Council may recall that last November, um, the council amended the city code to provide for supplemental assessment of real property taxes. Um, as a companion to that amendment, the council must also amend chapter seven, seventy-eight to provide for the abatement of levies in certain instances provided, uh, by the Code of Virginia.
Virginia, essentially allowing that the city may assess and supplemental bill for real property improvements accomplished after January first. As a matter of fairness for structures or property that are damaged, raised, or destroyed through fortu, fortuitive, fortuitous events, the city must also provide for the abatement of such levies in those cases specified in the Code of Virginia. So this is a little bit of housekeeping and a matter of fairness to the taxpayers in the community.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
Just as a matter of record, what does, what qualifies as a fortuitous event?
So I might turn to the attorney for a more informed and specific answer.
Not of their own making.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. So we'll take this up at our, at our next meeting. And number nine, communication correspondence and calendar.
Just a reminder this evening that the city's Christmas parade is this Saturday. There'll be some road closures in the downtown area impacting that, but we encourage people to come out and attend and be aware of that as they shop and visit the downtown in approaching the hours of the parade. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. And moving on to number ten, citizen, citizen comment period. Do you have any?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ray LaFosse.
Okay. Mr. LaFosse, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then the little stoplight up here, green will mean go, and red will mean stop. Appreciate it, thank you.
Ray LaFosse, twenty-four thirteen Monroe Street, Waynesboro. And I have a question, though, first, that I'm going to ask of the council and Mr. Hamp and our legal advice. Who in the town has oversight and operational duties over our treasury and our revenue people? And I know you can't answer that for me tonight, but that's something I think that's very, very important to be answered. And my second part will be a question and information of why I've asked this question, because I think at this point, you have no oversight over them. They are sort of a loose ship floating down our river with nobody controlling them. So whatever they do with that ship is up to them. And that's why I asked that question. Now, the next phase of why I've asked the question is, I had a, a situation, and Mr. Henderson and Mr. Hostetter know what I'm talking about. Everybody that got a personal property tax for their cars, many of us received a ten dollar fee per car for a late fee. And that was, I had to question it, and it comes to be that in January or February, early part of February usually, they mail out a questionnaire that you fill out that has to be returned by May first, and says where your cars are stored, if you sold them or whatever. I have copies of the two forms that I returned, and they claim they never received them. When I questioned our revenue department, I found that the person who sort of handles this, not, not Sabrina herself, but a person who works under her, says to me, well, when we mail those out in February, and if we don't get them back because you never received them, that's not our problem. It's your problem. So my only contention is that if we get these forms and we fill them out, you better bring them into this office down here and get a receipt that they've received them. Because otherwise, you don't stand a prayer, because they're not going to, I have copies of the two forms I sent back. Now, even if your mortgage company doesn't get your payment on time, even if they're taking it out of your checking account and something gets fuddled up, they will contact you. So I says to the fellow, I says, well, by May first, if you didn't get anything back, maybe by the middle of May, a letter should have gone out to the ones you did not get back and say, here's the form, we did not receive your form. If you've sent it, maybe we haven't received it from the post office. And, and the post office makes mistakes, but not that many, because Sabrina's comment to me was, I don't get thousands of these forms back. Something's rotten in River City, if that's the case. So that's the reason I asked the first question, which you can't answer, because basically, from what I can gather, you folks have no control over those two departments, none whatsoever. Even if there's something wrong, you cannot get a direction from them if you try and ask a legitimate question. And their comment is, not my problem. So they're hurting not only us, the residents, but the commercial people that have to deal with them also. And I don't think it's only over this. And your stormwater that we're just, just discussing tonight, you got your bill either Saturday or today. So there's your, their problem that I'm bringing up. This was a perfect night to do it, because that bill was supposed to be mailed the third week in October. They didn't mail it until Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, all right? And that's the reason I brought up the, the first question, then.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Mr. Greg Bruno.
Thank you. With, with that, we have a closed session meeting. I would, I would be remiss, though, I mean, I, I think, I just want to add, I mean, that they, just for clarification, you have, Sabrina's office is, is, she's elected by the, by the voters of Waynesboro, as is Ms. Beveridge. And I, in my experience, been that they do a, a very honorable and an exceptional job for our city. And I would, I would also offer that, in terms of the billing, I know I got, I'd gotten that question, our city charter requires that the, that the bills are mailed fourteen days prior to when they're due. And you, you might have heard of Munis, and we've had, we've had these conversations on our, on our billing software for quite some time. And we've been very fortunate as a community to have, I think, strong stewards of, from our, our billing offices, specifically Ms. Beveridge, who has done, I think, an extraordinary job of, when she has the ability to mail those things out, she doesn't wait. She doesn't blink an eye, she sends those things out. The, the billing software this year did not cooperate in the way that she typically likes to deliver services. So I don't want to speak for her, but I, I know that, I know her, and, and I think that, so just as a, as acknowledgement, I think, of her service, and while we did not go out in the, in the way that I think we've been accustomed to, it is consistent with our city, city code, and just, I guess, get the head nod for Mr. Shaw over there, but.
Right. Yes, and I, I might only add that we had a similar situation when the tax billing system went live. We got it out right in advance of, of their due date. But then the second half tax billing went out as Ms. Beveridge normally sends them out, you know, about six weeks, two months in advance. And the same, I think, people can expect with the next stormwater billing.
Yeah. Okay. With that, great.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that this meeting be recessed, that the city council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene into closed meeting for the following purposes. Consideration of personnel matters regarding the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, benefits, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officer, appointee, or employees of the city, as permitted by Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, paragraph A, section one. The subject matter of this meeting is regarding a specific local government employee.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? This motion requires a roll call of vote. Ms. Mortal.
Mayor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Allen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter.
Aye.
We're in closed session.[1182.21]
I just read out then.
Uh, let's see, I think, I think that's where it is. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the city council of Waynesboro has convened in closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of Code of Virginia requires certification by this city council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, now therefore it be resolved that the city council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which certification resolution applies. Two, only such business matters were identi, as were identified in the motion convened in closed meeting, were heard, discussed, considered by the Waynesboro City Council.
This, uh, motion requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Allen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter.
Aye.
Back in session, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Adjourn, thank you.